If I could have your attention, please. Welcome to the Zonin Board Meeting, December 12th, 2017. My name is Marty Aitken, I'm the chairman. To my left, your right. Mr. Cavais, Vice Chair. Board Manager, Mr. O'Briens. Chairman, Mr. Himmel. Behind me, the head of Inspectual Services, Mr. Duca. To my right, your left, our clerk, Ms. Murphy. If you have a cellphone or pager, please put on silent and vibrate so you don't interrupt the meeting. If anyone wants to talk, please go outside. It's hard to hear when people are talking after this. If anyone's gonna testify tonight, please stand up and raise your right hand. If you think you might testify. If you think you might. If you even think a little you might. There you go.
Do you swear to tell the truth the whole trip? Nothing but the truth, so help you God?
And you have all business. Oh, I need a motion to be...
The chairman made a motion to waive the reading of the minutes from November 28th.
On the motion, CNN on in favor? Aye. Opposed? Or moved? Before we start, I'd like to recognize Dave McCarty, if you could, please. That's our new wide one counselor for the city. And he'll be sworn in in January, but as you can see, he's ready and eager to get going. Thank you, Dave. Under all business, I have a letter here.
I have two letters from...
With drawdown prejudice, yeah.
Case number Z-1749. I have a letter here to withdraw without prejudice, 90 Intervell Street. On the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Madam number Z-17-49, for a variance to something by the existing lot and constructing a new two-family, a newly created lot on premise number 90 Intervell Street, I make a motion to withdraw without prejudice.
Second. On the motion, CNN on in favor? Aye. Opposed? Or moved? Case number Z-1748, 126 Intervell Street. I have a letter here to withdraw without prejudice.
This is Chairman, Madam Z-17-48, Dunbow, for a variance to construct a two-family home on a pre-existing lot on premise number 126 Intervell Street, I make a motion to withdraw without prejudice.
Second. On the motion, CNN on in favor? Aye. Opposed? Or moved? We have a letter here, case number Z-1795, going fire. They wanna move the meeting till January 23rd.
This is Chairman, Madam Z-17-95, for a variance, for a variance finding to demolish the existing two-family home house and constructing a two-story addition to expand parking lot in the existing business on premise number 288 to 292 Willard Street, I make a motion to continue the hearing until January 23rd.
Second. On the motion, CNN on in favor? Aye. Opposed? Or moved? Under all business, case number Z-1797, Lu Won Chen, for variance to construct a new single-family home in the existing lot on premise number 54-56 Spring Street. Is the Alpina representative here? Greg, you have the floor.
Greg, I'm chairman. So this is our second meeting. In the first one, you suggested that the living area of this proposal is quite large. On the basement, you're suggesting to convert that into a garage and work that way. On the lower floor, we're gonna limit about 900 square feet of living area and convert that into a two-car parking garage. So the only living area right now is on the first and second floor, which consists of a three-bedroom and a four-martini. Total of less than... It's looking over 200 square feet.
You have a new set of plans? Someone took, we had a file, we were gone. You have a new set of plans? That's it, Mr. Duca.
You guys all got these in your life?
No, they gave us, not me. Didn't they? Gave us what's me, didn't you?
No.
No.
You gave...
You're right.
Some of you...
That was the... Show those down because I don't know where they went.
Now, Mrs. Cooper.
Thank you, I got them.
Yeah, they put the garage on there.
On the backside?
Yeah. So you pull in there and then you... Yeah. It's looking nice in that way. Any questions? No, please say it.
We're ready.
Thanks.
Sorry.
We will. We'll keep it in the polls. Any questions, yes?
I have none. Just got others.
Yeah? You can have a seat.
Okay.
Since the plans changed, what they did, so everyone knows, they took out the bottom floor living space, which looked like an apartment down there last night. They made that a garage. And they have one, two floors of living space, like a regular home. So the downstairs will be the garage, then you'll have two stories of living space. Does anyone wanna speak in favor? First call, second call? Anyone speak in favor? No?
I just have a question, honey.
You okay? You got time. If you undecided in a minute. Third call, call our party, you haven't closed. Anyone correspond? No one corresponds? Anyone opposed or undecided? You step up.
Okay, sure.
Name and address to the mic.
Sure.
We can hear.
Our gold brick 50 Spring Street is a solid home that's been with the family 100 years. We met Ms. Chen in September when she had a workman cleaning the lot. And I didn't hear it mentioned here. She said she wanted a tiny in-law apartment for her son. So I don't know if that's still in the plans.
No, that's what was.
Okay.
Downstairs was like an in-law apartment.
Okay.
They took that out, made that a garage. Now there's just two floors of living space.
Okay, that's right.
That's what it is.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else opposed or undecided? Second call? Third call, call our party, you haven't closed. Anybody else? It's gonna fit well. It's a nice house, and it's just nice. It's a nice guy. I'll be going.
I'll be going, please.
On the motion, please.
Chairman, Madam number Z-17-95. Lee Jun Chen, for a variance to construct a new single-family home on the existing lot on premise number 54-56 Spring Street, I make a motion to grant the variance.
Second. On the motion, CNN on in favor? Aye. Opposed? Or moved? Thanks. Under under all business, Simon Lamb, for variance to construct a second-floor addition on premise 136 Holbrook Road. We had the hearing, and we have a new set of plans on the clock. I know you just gave it to us and we didn't get a chance, so why don't you go over what you're gonna do?
Aye. My son left when the city called Holbrook. At first meeting, we had a discussion. Under the guidance of the board, we changed the parking lot to vertical, as a horizontal.
How big is that piece of grass?
Forty-five. Four... forty-five meters.
Why is it so small? I mean, it looks like a little strip.
Four... yeah, forty-five. It matched up the curve in the part of the tree. It's one curve by the little bit.
Oh. If you look at the curve, if you look at your brass, it's like...
You want?
You could rub another couple of feet, but... I just want some brass. That's all I think we're looking for. I know you're looking a lot more than that.
Yeah, I am. I'm sorry.
Oh, that's fine. That's what we have. I just think there could be
I know.
a walkway coming from this kind of walkway. There really isn't. The grass would be seven feet wide, at least. And that says five zero. Does it say five two in this plan?
Forty-five. Thirty feet deep.
It says four oh, huh?
Yeah.
Why do they even print stuff like this? I think they've got six. How big is that? Twelve? Well, twelve to the curb cut. So what we should do? Twelve, we can have five, ten... Something jogging, because this is twelve. Let's see.
One of them, right. Is that what you're gonna?
Yeah, it says twelve. Yeah, it's twelve feet down the block, right? But that's not the whole thing.
It's not the whole thing, right.
So what's up top? I can't read that. It says five foot four and...
And eight five.
Eight five. So it's eighteen.
Fourteen.
Take a look. So you get two more feet. More feet up here than each side.
What's next?
Yeah, so why don't the grass match? You know what I mean? Why don't the grass match? And you got a nice chunk of grass. It's in the middle, and looks a lot better than this. Those are my voices, if you can do that. You have questions?
I don't have any questions.
Not that... Is there something that's... No, 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 I'm just saying. It's like, the second floor, it's a small house. It isn't what it is. Any questions?
No, I'm good, I think. I'm fine.
Yeah? You have a couple of questions? Oh. You guys can have a seat. Anyone here to speak on this plan? Holbrook Street? We have a new set of plans, where they're gonna put seven feet of grass in the front of the house, instead of no grass. So they're gonna have some grass in the front of the house. So let's go through the hearing. Is there anyone who wants to speak in favor? First call, second call? Third call closed?
No.
No new correspondent? Anyone opposed or undecided? First call, second call? Third call closed? I mean, the house is footprinted, it is small, but I don't think... You're gonna get the cars off the street. What else do you do then? That's the harvest of that whole place. If you do get them off the street. You start pulling up and everything. I'll be going in favor.
I'll be going opposed, Mr. Chairman.
Likewise.
On the motion, please, yes.
In Madam number Z-17-106, Simon Lamb, for a variance to construct a second-floor addition on the premises number 136 Holbrook Road, I make a motion to grant the variance for the addition of seven feet of grass in between the two parking spaces.
Second. On the motion, CNN on in favor? Aye. Opposed? Or moved?
Aye.
Aye. For the move, four to one.
Aye.
Four to one. No, no, I guess. I lose, you lose, we always lose on... No, it's just fifty. It's the way it should be. Under new business, case number Z-17-107, Molly Jacobs, for variance to rebuild the existing garage, small footprint, and a half-story storage on premise number 23C. Is the Alpina representative there?
Yes. I'm Molly Jacobs, and this is... Who's the architect?
Okay. You have the floor. Name and address?
I will change it to 23C.
Okay. You wanna speak, you want name? Oh, I'm Bruce Wood. Address? Fifty-nine Minus Street, Austin. Austin, North.
Oh, you're on the floor.
So when I bought the house six years ago, the garage, what I knew was a problem and would need to be replaced because the pillars underneath are broken and the whole structure is leaning to the side. And the floors are crumbling. As you can see, I gave you the picture and are covered with plywood. And I went to see if I could replace them or repair them. They said no, because it would sink under the weight. And so, and it's unusable because the doors are too narrow to have a big car and a regular-sized, typical-sized car. So I finally been able to build something that will not only be functional for me, but will also complement the lines of the house.
With me as that right there, you didn't have no one drive through your garage all that time, huh?
All that time!
Wouldn't slip down that thing and just take it out for you.
I would like somebody to do that, given the price of how much it's gonna cost to take your... Yeah.
That's where I live. I can't have no one there.
You are welcome to crash into it.
That's...
So what I wanna do, because right now the garage blocks the sightline of the entrance of the house, I would like to make it a little bit smaller. And I just want the roof to mimic the roof of the house. I want it to be shingled like the house is. It will really look nice. And right now, as you can see, it is not particularly attractive, as well as not functional.
Wait on, one second. Any questions?
I don't have a question. Is that gonna be a single count or...
Yes. And there is nowhere else to put the hardships on. There is no place to go to use the car.
The host, the street, like...
Right, exactly. It is what it is.
I mean, the roof... The height of...
So the height is maybe a couple of feet higher than it is now, but it's still situated far lower than my house and doesn't block the sideline from my neighbor across the street at the water. In fact, the best thing I ever did was take down the tree on the side of the house, and she's the real...
Yeah. She's putting it in the... All that new stone.
Yes, she is. Your son's doing it, yeah.
What's the height of the garage inside? Before the floors?
Do you mind if I look at the plan?
I think it's ten feet. Why do you have a ten-foot garage? What about the storage?
I wanted to put storage above it, because right now...
No, above it, above it's fine. I'm thinking the garage itself. Why the garage isn't like eight feet? So, I got eleven-six. Partially for proportion.
Partially for proportion.
But it's like...
Well, there's another...
It's high, and it's blocking your house.
Well, yeah, but it's over to the right, so in fact, it will block less than it does now. Right now, it obliterates the house because the entrance...
You can't see the entrance, right.
You can't see the entrance.
Because she's driving by.
So this will be far nicer. Even though it's a little higher, it's still lower than the side of the house.
But why do you need an eleven-foot?
So there's another thought that if somebody buys the house from me and wants a two-car garage, and this is a single-car garage, I have to price out those lifts, and this could accommodate two cars. And then I get around the zoning piece, which says that a two-bedroom house should have a two-car garage. I don't need that, but I wanna be able to have the flexibility when I sell it, and it would be able to house two cars.
But it is... It is what it is right now.
Right now, it's not functional.
Exactly. It is what it is, but I still can't see an eleven-foot garage that you don't need. It's just, it's too big to be right in the street.
So, and the pieces that we thought was not only for aesthetics to match the peak of the roof, which is high as you can see, but to give flexibility in the future in case somebody ever wanted a two-car garage, that they could house two cars.
I'm not in favor unless it gets shrunk, because I just think it's too tall. It's just too tall of a garage right on the street. It's just, you don't need to... There's no reason for us to ever put one car garage. Just like now, I feel, it's big.
It's tall, but it's narrow enough, so the roof itself will be narrow.
Any questions?
I have another question. No, I have another question. No questions.
Is your only objection about height?
Yeah.
So the depth, everything else is fine.
Everything else is fine. I just think that garage should be shrunk down probably like two feet at least. You know, it's just wasted space right now. It's wasted space, and it's right on the street.
It's wasted space if we don't have two cars. I just...
But some people have two-car garages. They got five cars in every house. That's not the point. The point is, what does it look like on the street? To me, really, it's just big. It's tall. When you drive by, it's gonna be this big, tall, where it don't have to be.
Well, I think it's about three feet taller than what it is. So in fact, when it's just the roof that peaks...
But even the one that's there...
Yeah.
Doesn't look good. In front of the house, it just don't look good. It don't look like it long, right?
Well, it sure doesn't.
No, no, no. It just, not because, I'm just saying, if it was brand-new, it just, it just don't look right. Like, the garage shouldn't be like... I know because of where you live, it has to. I get that, I believe. I've been there.
I think, taking into consideration that it's thinner and it will be matching the house and shingled and attractive and outside.
I get it.
I think that even if the roof is peaked, I think that the flexibility in the future of having two cars and cars block the street in the snow is definitely something that I know you're concerned about in the winter.
But here's what I'm gonna say. Someone buys your house, they're gonna be paying about a million and a half, and I think they could put up a $10,000 garage.
I wish it was worth a million.
Well, it really is. By the time you sell it, it will.
I would be very happy, but I wanna live there a long time. And if my daughter ever comes and has another car in the winter, I would like to be able to put her up with a car and she doesn't have to shovel out. I mean, I'm just thinking about my old age and thinking that it would be nice to have the flexibility of having two cars as I get into my...
Well, we get into those stacked garages, and then they get the lifts and the sides, and then put the pedals with... The metal that holds in the car,
Yeah.
like sixty pounds of weight. I said, who's gonna lift me? First of all? No, no, no. When it go up. When it goes up, it's...
Yeah.
It's just, you'll cut your face off when you walk by, because it's up. It's just this space in those garages. So that's why they had a problem over there. And then the same thing in the down in our front. It's like, those things are...
The residents, they... Dead with them. Wouldn't you wanna be on top of those myself?
But anyway, that's it. I guess that's, we can talk afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here who wants to speak in favor? Speak in favor? First call, second call? Third call closed? I have a letter from the DPW. You can have a seat.
Okay.
I have a letter from the DPW that they have no comments on the project. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided, first call, second call? Counselor, you wanna say a few words?
Yes. Thank you.
I got the forest, which is always it.
This is it. This is my final...
This is it?
Yeah, application. I'm leaving everybody. So, as you know, I'm a frequent flyer, and this is in everybody, you know. It's the best. I will appreciate that the Alpina reached out very early and said, hey, what do you think on this? And I think what we know of Alznaq is it's pre-existing, non-conforming all day long. We have one of the best streets in the city with some of the highest property values. Where, you know, handcuffed to bed by wood improvements coming in because of exactly the hardships that she referenced. So I do support the application. I was surprised that you were reducing, actually from two bays to one. And I'm actually disappointed to see the reduction because parking is so difficult there. And I just wanna be clear, there isn't a chance you're ever going to see permitted in a single-family rez, a lift. And that's just not gonna happen. This is New York City, it's Prince of Massachusetts.
It's a clever idea.
Really?
Oh, it is!
I think the density and the integrity of neighborhoods, my friend, we'd never be bringing that by. So I just don't see us going that way. However, I think what's important is she could, you know, continue with the pre-existing, non-conforming conditions. You know, you're getting an opportunity to match, to consider a kind of an unmatchedy bit of light, you're, you know, deteriorating, theoretically. I appreciate the investment. I would like to see the two cars. I appreciate the investment. I would like to see the two cars and I, I was, actually, you raised a point that surprised me, but wouldn't Director Duka, wouldn't that then be a non-conforming by reducing parking on the property? Like, that was actually a surprise to me, that you can't, you can't then cause another additional hardship by reducing your parking. So I just assumed it was two bays. I'm comfortable with the height. The steps are fantastic, the match. I'm lucky it's too close to the street. But I just don't see, you know, the height includes too close to the street. However, what's the alternative? And I think by, you know, making like connection, I'm comfortable with it. So I guess that's what it is, is difficult situation, difficult topography, how else can you accommodate off-street parking there? You know?
And what I'm saying, Counselor, is that's fine.
Yeah.
Like, this thing's like 20 feet tall.
I thought you just said, I thought you just said it's three feet higher than existing.
Yeah.
And it's 11, is 11 the ceiling?
That's, that's the ceiling.
Is 11 the peak or is 11 the bay? 11 is the bay. 11 is just the bay.
11 and a half.
19.6.
It's 19.6.
Oh, 19.6, okay. I gotcha. I thought they were saying 11.
No, no. And it's, and this thing's...
11 is the bay.
For a single bay.
With the loft above, with your storage loft.
Storage, yes. Storage above it. Definitely trying to do a above.
However, then you get your roof peak above that. I thought the storage was interior to the roof peak. So with that, those are my comments this evening. Thank you.
Is there anyone else opposed or undecided? Call if you're interested. You know, it's just, it's just, I know what she wants and I love to say yes. I just don't think driving up the street and seeing a 20-foot garage on the street's gonna look good. I just can't agree unless we shrink it. I just... I don't know how the rest of it becomes...
Well, I think 23 is kinda high. I think it's a clever idea.
Oh, yeah. It is.
And we might be seeing more of this in the future. But I think though that is 23 is kinda high, right? I'll be in favor of something.
Are we creating a problem by reducing it to one car? There's two on the back or on the side?
No, they all park in the street down there. Everyone.
No, but I don't think they could use this as a two now anyways. It's too small. It's a fit modern garage, so it's really, it's a moot point.
Well, no, they could build a garage or two, but you'd have no front door. You wouldn't see the house.
You can't see, yeah.
You wouldn't see nothing.
We looked at that and completely blocked the house.
Right there with all the, the stone and the layers as it goes down the stairs. It's beautiful.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Beautiful home. I just think a 20-foot garage on the street is a bit much. It's just... And it's, and it's short. And why, why, he probably wouldn't, it would probably fit that, a two-car. But it take away from your house. It had, it would just, you wouldn't see the front door. You'd have to go find it.
You wouldn't even see the house.
No, you'd have to go find it, right.
I really don't wanna block the house to that extent. It's hard enough. People...
Anyone use that walkway that paved the street to go down on the beach?
No.
No one's ever used that?
No.
Hey, come down next spring. There's one going through all my Navy jobs. If you look at all the streets up there, everyone's got one through the yard. This is beautiful. It'd like they killed if you tried to walk on it. Yeah, you can't. I'll ask you to stand up and come to the mic so I don't hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I mean, it's an interesting discussion because when we started drawing it, I was kinda like, oh god, this is awful. Garage, a one-car garage is just so awful. So we actually made an offset roof. I mean, it's theory that some future person could finish the building into a two-car garage back to where it was. And it seems to be true, but by being more vertical proportion. Because it was actually, it's actually even taller because of the offset roof. So we went through its options and brought it back down to sort of a conventional roof. But what I did taller, it seemed more like a seaside building than some of the typical similar drop. So I take your point, but even, well, as I say, I take it to the minimum. Just the height, so the height of the structure being the size of the house behind it has really been a challenge. I understand on the street.
It's, it's right on the street and if you're coming down maze, you're gonna see more of that house.
More of that house, yes. Coming backwards.
Coming down, you know, coming down Sierra or coming down maze, you're gonna see more of the house with a, with a shorter garage. It's just, it's a prettier look, I think, than looking at this 20-foot garage in front of you coming down the street. So can we shrink that? We have a lot of nose up here. Kind of trying to know.
At the top of the hill, there's a few that, you know, I mean, I think it isn't something you'd design today. But who's the old Lawrence Eddie house, the yellow house? You know, there it is. There's the garage and the house is stepped down. So there's a couple of them at the peak of the hill. I, I get it. I get it, Marty. I agree. I mean, I, I do...
You wouldn't, you wouldn't build that like that.
Right. But then how, what's the solution to give that for today?
You still gotta nine foot. Nine to nine, you gotta, I mean, you're going 10 and a half. What's inside? 10 and a half to you? 11 and a half.
It's 11 and a half inside.
Right. So you can't bring that down like nine?
Could be, could be a negotiation.
No, I'm just saying, you couldn't bring that down to nine. Nine-foot garage.
I really just wanna be able to have...
No, high nine feet? That's, that's a big garage.
I'm just trying to get some stuff on the side for the garden, for the garden too as in the, you know, anyway.
I guess the question is...
Nine feet.
She's actually quite serious about this lift because they're only a four-man. Compared to the Costa's building, they're actually free by comparison.
Right.
So I think 10 feet would probably be the minimum. We were, I wasn't afraid of the proportions.
So you cut it down a foot and a half, you're saying, maybe do...
Would that satisfy your concern?
So I just wanna add one, one comment for the record. I just, sometimes you ask my show, you get surprised by your answers. The investment they make, I knew it was expensive. I knew the topography was difficult. We're talking project bids coming in at 80 to 100,000 dollars.
So far, the bids have gotten...
I just wanna kind of share that with the board as we're talking about what level of investment she's looking to make to make accommodations for parking. I, I mean, you've got, it's an interesting case. It's interesting topography. It's why we have a Sony border fails. I mean, it does fit the criteria. I just...
I mean, I'm really looking to make this...
I don't see a lift. I just don't, I mean, does anyone wanna weigh in on the lift option? I know you're seeing that as...
No, no, no. Yeah, and you could see that, I, who knows, who knows what's gonna happen.
It'll be tied commercial ones.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, they haven't, they haven't sold it well.
The thing is, it's like...
Compared to the building, they're not...
I'll tell you what, if you wanna, if you wanna come back, we're drawn tonight.
With maybe a little shorter at least and figure out what, what does that lift really need?
Exactly. See exactly what you need.
It actually depends on what you put on it, obviously, because, you know...
Well, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So I, I'm saying that I think 10 feet would probably work.
With a lift.
But it's not probably and then all of a sudden you get a lift and you say, I need 10, 8.
Well, I'm not gonna redo the garage at that point.
You know what I mean? It's like, now we're out.
I'm not gonna redo the garage. I mean, it's gonna be what, you know...
You see these pictures of the, like, guy's Corvette is shut right up against the ceiling. You know, don't do that, but...
Oh, and you ain't go so hot.
Right.
But it depends on the size of the car.
I mean, if we can...
It doesn't matter. You still gotta clear, you gotta clear the first...
If we can do 10 feet inside, we'll do it.
But if you got a van, you know, going out the street, it ain't gonna work in there anyway.
Are you gonna have a 10 inside? Can you give us 10 inside and we'll make it work?
I think you're gonna need 10 feet for a vehicle above. I mean, you know, seven, not, any center feet for a vehicle above and whatever the vehicle underneath, so I don't know.
Well, no, you're just saying, he's saying, like, regular, two, two regular cats.
Yeah.
You could say 10 foot one.
Oh, no, I'll never win.
It can't happen. We have a truck, you have a van, it's limited cats when you use those. And it's, there is, there's limited weight, there's limited everything to those lifts, so...
If we, if we lower it, you know, where the rafters are basically at the sill now, I would, I would raise the rafter ties up inside. Obviously, at some point, the roof is coming in and...
I get what you're saying.
But you can spare, you know, you know it's something.
Exactly. You can still spare it up like, and then go like this.
We would put the rafter ties up at the same, we leave the rafter ties where the wood bring the roof down. And so we have the same clearance more or less over the car. Yeah.
So you're only gonna have 10 foot. So you're gonna shrink it, you're saying you're shrinking it by a foot and a half?
I'm saying, would that be acceptable?
So we're at 17 and a half, right?
It's, it's 19.6 now. It would be, it would be 18.18, 18.0.
And right now it's 16 or something?
Yeah.
It's 16, yeah. Is that a little...
That'll look alright.
Okay.
I think that'll look alright.
Thank you.
You know, that'll give them what they need. All right. Can I have a motion? I think you're all unsafe.
Yeah.
It's insane.
I'm waiting for a third one.
Like I said, building the inside, you're building like that.
And we can do it, and, okay, great. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, Madam Z17-107, for a variance to rebuild the existing garage, a small foot grade and a half-story storage on premise number 110 Hobart Street. And then post a grant to there with the consideration that has to be...
Sir. On the motion, CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So move. Thank you. Have a good one.
Thank you very much.
Have a merry Christmas. Brother on the tonight's agenda, John Coleman for a variance to extend the left side of the building out three feet from the property line on premise number 110 Hobart Street. The applicant representative here.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen. My name is John Coleman. I own property at 110 Hobart Street in Quincy, Mass. I've lived at that property the majority of my life. I have a single-car garage at my property right now. The garage was built approximately 1929 and in the fall of 2017, I applied for and received a permit to extend my garage approximately, actually exactly six feet off the property. I, since that time, I spoke with, with Director Duka, who recommends, well, who I consulted with and asked his opinion of the possibility of obtaining a variance to extend it approximately three more feet, which would keep me three and a half feet from my neighbor's property line. Since that time, I spoke to my neighbor and asked if there was any concerns, any problems, and instead, none whatsoever. And then I decided to move forward with the next step and which is why I'm here in front of me tonight.
Mr. Coleman, what's, what are you putting in there?
I have a single-car garage. I wanna be able to park my truck in the garage, put my lawn equipment, my patio furniture, my snowboard, lawnmower. I just need, need room.
Does any, does anyone use a garage? Do you use a garage?
Oh, right now, yes. I'm stuffed in there with all my lawn equipment.
Well, that's, I see your truck out front. It's got us out front.
Yes.
Yeah, so it's tough parking anyway.
It's tough.
And stacked parking. I get all that. You're, you're in the back, the Hobart, which is pretty, pretty lucky down the head. Those parking things. So I, I spoke with Mr. Duka about this, about the permit deposition. And that's why you're here, to bring it over to that 3B. How could you just didn't go up and just put a two-car garage?
I didn't wanna take away from my yard over on the side and I didn't need that much room for it. I kinda started out thinking this might be the best panseer.
You drove her about 19 anyway, right?
Well...
I mean, that was four probably would have gave you, you know, retrospect, you know, yes. A two-car garage.
I, I, I just, I think it may look, look nicer too, the way, the way it'll be constructed. I think it'll be somewhat quaint. When it's done, I'll put bushes up in front to make it, you know...
So you don't see that?
Correct.
Yeah.
I've done a lot of work to my home, put aside...
Oh, no, no. It was nice. Very nice.
I've done a lot of work with landscaping.
I just didn't understand the roof thought like that. I'm going, why would you?
I would've done it different, but that's just me. I...
You can get something under the snow, so you don't have to clean your car up. Right? It's a little better, but I understand what you're... Any questions we have? Thanks. You can have a seat. Is there anyone who wants to speak in favor? First call, second call, third call closed. I have a letter from the DPW. They have no comment. If anyone opposed or undecided, first call, second call, third call closed. I'm in favor. I think it's, it's so far back.
I'm in favor.
I got the other garage on the other side right up to the line.
I know. So, yeah.
We'll have minimal second hand. It's actually, yeah.
Favorite what? Have a motion please?
Mr. Chairman, Madam Z17-110, John Coleman for a variance to extend the left side of Alstel B2, three feet from property line. On premise number 110 Hobart Street, and they can both approve their variance.
Second. On the motion, CNN, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? So move. Thank you, Mr. Coleman.
Thank you very much.
Happy holidays.
Thanks, holiday. Happy holidays. Happy holidays.
Brother on the new business, case number Z17-110. Name's Schrock. Our variance changed from a single-family home to a two-family home on the premise number 66, now. The applicant and their representative here.
Yes, good evening. I'm Dave Schrader, St. 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 Pagnell Street, homeowner along with my wife, Rachel Schrader here. St. St. Pagnell Street, and this is the contractor. Who was possibly designing the building, the addition that we're planning. So essentially the background here is, is living that straight out of the small two-bedroom house on St. Pagnell Street, Germantown. Great cross street from the O'Brien Towers and the... Really, everyone is better. So it's pretty prominent in the straight across the street from that building. And right now, we would like to add an addition to that house for my mother. She is retiring now. She has a number of health problems. One is severe arthritis. She lives right now in Sandmore, Virginia, which is kind between, in the Lakes region and just south of it. It's, it's a very snowy area.
Oh, that's not good.
So she, she has to move it.
We fridge it around.
So anyway, so what we'd like to do is that, in addition, to accommodate her, provide her with a place to age in place. So, and that's what the point of addition is for. So it's pretty small, actually. In those dark sets, I, we've actually had to fight to get it smaller. Because that's what she wants, what she needs. She's very particular and that's the size that she wants. Everyone else wanted to build a larger, but that's, and she wants her bedroom, you know, and, you know, some, some stuff like that. And I understand there are some issues surrounding some of the accommodations. She'd like to help age in place to do some of the food preparation areas that she'd like. And we're willing to work towards with as more as needed, but...
Why do you wanna turn to two-family and not...
Oh, we don't want, okay, sorry. We have no intent to turn this into a two-family home. This is a one-family.
One family has to be in common. So that area has to be in common when you got a house, like an open doorway of some, some sort.
So we're fine. Keep it open doorway to what, whatever, how you...
An archway or...
Yeah, and there's a door between, you can just camp there.
You gotta work with Mr. Duka to come up with a solution to make this a single-family home. Set a plan that accommodates your mother. Whatever your addition is, that's not a two-family. Your application tonight is to take a one-family and turn it into a two-family. That's what your application is.
Can I just ask a clear, funny question about that? So in my eyes, they're connected in one place. So my part, my question is, how, how could it be connected in a way that...
But the idea is you just don't build something, so you just put up a brick wall and now you got another apartment there.
If she came with that, like, she's gonna...
It doesn't matter where she came and she leaves and you leave next, something happens, you leave in three months. It can't be a two-family home. And it happens.
I'm trying to conceptualize...
So you're saying we want us to take out, we can connect?
Oh, I, I don't know. Did you work with Mr. Duka? Did you go to the...
We did, but he couldn't explain why it would be a two-family home. Clearly, the intent of this, beyond any question, is one-family usage. So, and that's also supported by the design, you know, if we wanted to rent a debt, we of course, you know, financed it, built it larger and designed it for the intent, so renting out is an investment. So how we could turn a, you know, one-family home with, you know, aging place facilities for family members, which is also helping further compelling public interest of, you know, addressing the aging community in this nation. So we're trying to figure out how to merge these interests together into one, you know, one evidence that will meet the needs of the zoning board here.
So would we make sure the archway? Can you...
I mean, you have, you have, it's almost like a separate building in the back, the way it's, the way it's drawn here.
And part of that as well as you...
And then you have this little like box out here, why it isn't just like an addition, why didn't that come straight across? What's the reason for that?
So I think it's the mudroom that you're, you're discussing there. So I guess the issue is, we're all in the country and we love mudrooms. So we really like the mudroom.
I know. There's, there's nothing here. You come up these stairs, you walk in, you get your mudroom, but there's nothing on the other side. Why didn't you make it bigger and make the bathroom bigger?
Nothing on the other side of the mudroom?
Right, because I was trying to serve as much of the yard as possible.
That is because we really want to maintain the window in our kitchen.
You're right.
Oh, I, yeah, yeah, right. That's, that's, yeah, I said, why would they do that? Then I saw the window. But we gotta have this a little more, I don't know what you got for, I mean, is that just, you could put a door in there. It's three foot off. You put a door in there and you got an apartment. But you know, there is a kitchen in it, I see, right? You got a sink, refrigerator, stable, you got living room, then a room, bedroom, bath. I mean, it's, it's sufficient living if you put a door up. Put one door up and you get an apartment.
Not good.
Which is not good. So... Mr. Duka, wait. We have one second. Here. This whole, this whole... Something got some 300. They put a door by many, they got a box. This is also... Can't be built, they, they gotta, they total idea, bring this back. I know the windows there, but they're doing this all in... You want something big in, then they got a full bath here.
Well, the bath is better.
They got a full bath there. So you add the bath there too.
Well, the bath is, that's going to be designed specifically for use of and for elderly use.
Well, she adds it in her room, in her...
Yeah, so that's for my elderly, so...
And what's the other?
It's that...
That's something she really wanted and we really didn't care about the elderly.
Do you want some bathroom?
We cannot honestly answer. Well, one reason is because we have, we're right on the marsh. And so we bring our dogs out on the marsh and then get the scuffing. So we were thinking it would be nice to have a place to hose them off that isn't either of our actual bathrooms.
Oh, all right.
I think you suggested, so I will have a meeting with you at the zoning board.
You're with that Vincent?
Yeah, I've met with one of Barbara's advocates.
With who?
Someone who had her...
With her instruction?
Yeah, I, I don't, so, all right. I was gonna suggest, if you wanna come back and meet on Thursday, we'll try to hammer this out. But I, I just, I do wanna say, you mentioned that, you know, there's a need for this and I think we can all agree on it, but that's not for the board to decide. That one, that was discussed at a, at city council and the city decided not to address it or to, to allow two families to exist eventually. So that's a discussion here.
You're not attempting to make a two-family.
No, 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 but you can't, one door and you got a two-family home. We, you have to figure out something here, there. We're gonna be here all night, so... Can you make it there Thursday? Meet with, meet with Mr. Duka, our staff. Come up with a solution, come back here January 9.
It's Thursday? Thursday, what time?
I don't know. Whatever Thursday. I don't know, but you gotta have a set of drawings here before January 9, so you don't have much time.
Oh, we do.
It's every Thursday from 2 to 4 at the office.
Yeah, so this Thursday?
Yep, day after tomorrow.
Again, one tomorrow.
That's on the end Thursday. Yeah. Can you make that?
We would've done that. I think the building department said that, after speaking with the zoning department twice with my presence, said it's gonna go to ZVA. It's gotta go to ZVA. That's what we got.
The reason is because we couldn't hammer our plan, so you need relief to build a two-family. That's why you're here, but you made that.
Just explain why.
No, the application says two-family. It doesn't say single-family.
Says you wanna turn a single-family into a two-family. That's why they kept telling you, you gotta go there. The end of it. I can't help you with anything except for going to zoning. You wanna turn... Huh?
Some miscommunication.
Who wrote it? I didn't write it?
No, we're not saying that you. We're just saying someone, someone else.
Miscommunication with the building department.
You're the contractor. You're supposed to fill these out. Not even him. Her, you.
We did.
So you filled it out, want, it's like a family. So it's not a miscommunication. I think the company manager state, don't worry about anyone in the building department because that's not true. You're turning a one-family into a two-family. That's why you're here. All I say is if you can come back, January 9, with a set of plans that works, the president's delay will consider.
Chairman, I think the, the council wants...
No, I know. So, are you, you all set with that? Does anyone else set with that?
Yeah, yeah.
Right? I mean, it'll work it out.
You can figure it out.
You can figure it out. It's not hard. We just did it, we just did it a month ago.
It's just stressful, the sign is now...
But don't be stressed. Don't be stressed here. We're not here to do nothing but help.
It's hard for her, so it's stressful, but it's...
But we're not here to do... But we're not here to do nothing but help you, but, but when we're sitting here thinking, I went down and looked at it twice, and saying, why do they want a two-family?
No, I didn't, I was confused myself, this is why I, I'm, I'm taking work, so I apologize and say, if you're doing your power to grant something less than a two-family here, that would make no sense to buy a two-family anyway.
You just put an addition on, that's all you do.
So, but if you can't tonight, do something less than a two-family, then that will go back and work.
So, oh, I want a set of plans that I think everyone here would like to see a set of plans that works and feel comfortable, not let someone build an addition that could be a two-family house in a matter of putting up a, a three-o door in five minutes. Boom, 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 you got, you got a single, you got a two-family house. They go like this, okay, two pieces of door, you tie it together, you pin it, you're done.
Well, that's a very small addition overall, so I don't, I'm not sure of the addition size will accommodate an additional family.
You're not understanding a word of it.
Let me try, let me try, I, I speak, Marty, can I jump in?
What I'm saying is, you have a doorway, three foot tall, right?
Yes.
I take two, two pieces of pine with my door, slide it in, and pin it together, and have an apartment.
Give you my.
That's what we can't do, that's all we're saying.
Every applicant's success succeeded, I think, I think.
I get it, but if you sell your house, they will do it. If we allow that, that house will be a two-family next year or the day after you sell it.
What is it, it does?
Yeah, all right, I'm gonna give you this.
Have a seat, everyone, we're gonna.
Every one of these, this is like my.
Guys, look at that.
Okay, so, I'll tell you why. So, every single one of these.
A round of how many years of this?
Oh, no, not doing that tonight.
Oh, okay.
Just one case, I did reach out to, uh, the applicant's contractor today, seeing, you know, knowing this was on the agenda, and let them know how I could support something in a variance to accommodate your in-law needs, however. What you're seeing as an in-law unit, we are interpreting here as a two-family home, and I tried to clarify that on the phone, as well as all of an email, and CCB to Duka. And this is your first project, I have a home where my mother lives, a family home, you gotta come through the whole house and try to explain that. We're gonna work to your success, we will get the project, you want, we'll be a performance, Mr. Duka's great. But I just wanna leave my parting comments to the board, eight years, we have not supported one conversion in Board One from a single-family in residence aid to a two-family. I'm grateful for your support and unfolding that policy decision, you truly are protecting the integrity of the neighborhoods, owner occupied, single-family is the best quality of housing we have in the city, and it's the diligence of your board and the care that you have, so. I'm personally grateful for that, and just wanted to share, and I'm glad, I know that we're all speaking the same thing, because we see this all the time. A big shout-out to Sandmore Village, poor people's pub, pretty good pizza when you're driving home in ski season, so. I'm not picking my grandma up for you, but, no, really, you'll, you'll enjoy it, we got her here, this will work out, but the board does need to be diligent, it's not, so you and your tenants, it will become to the house, and we have seen a lot of it, so. So, some of it, we're very proud of, I know, so I hope you understand, okay, thanks so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
You're welcome.
A pleasure, eight years.
Eight years.
Yeah.
Marty, voting season next year, ski season twenty-eight.
Exactly, that's what I'm thinking.
Game on, we're all up.
Thinking, maybe game, maybe game on for me too.
Yeah.
Would you beat me in first election?
This guy. I'm right here, so we have a lot of fun.
That was the best thing that ever happened to me.
I want to say the same.
After, after about three months, I go, geez, that was the best thing that ever happened to me.
Treat him, it's delicious.
It's delicious. All right, uh, we're gonna continue this till, uh. Is there anyone here to speak on this case? Anyone? No, okay. Uh, can we continue this to January ninth, if they're gonna go to this, I mean, it's definitely everybody in the time to think.
I know that he wanted, I was just wanting to do this, I guess.
Doesn't mind, if you look at it.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's true, okay.
You can get that done, right, set of plans.
There's nothing much to change.
Mr. Chairman, man number D seventeen, one-one-oh, David Schroder for exaggerating in shape of a single-family home to a two-family. On the premise number sixty-six Pagnell Street, Quincy, make a motion to continue here until the ninth of January. Second.
On the motion, CNN, all in favor? Close, some more.
And don't forget to come in Thursday. Yep. Fifty-five C Street.
What time?
Two to four.
Rather on tonight's bid, Z seventeen. One-eleven. Lives in Long Island. For variance to construct a second-story addition on the premise number eighty-seven Freeman Street, is the applicant and their representative here? Is there applicant and their representative here? Who's here for what? Anyone else here for anything? No?
Just hanging out.
On Framing?
Uh, eighty-seven, uh, eighty-three.
Does anyone here at Framing Street, the applicant? You know.
The neighbor got their notification.
It's there, it's there. It's their, uh, their application and, uh. We need to go for January.
I've got a ton.
Really?
There's, there's a ton of old business.
How's that, twenty-third?
That man that just left, we should tell him.
Oh. Okay.
No, he left the eight.
He left.
Oh, did he? Okay.
John, yeah.
I hope he does.
Does anybody?
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, man number Z seventeen, dash one-eleven, been in blue, for a variance to construct a second-story additional on the premise number eighty-seven Freeman Street, Quincy, make a motion to continue here until twenty-third of January. Second.
On the motion, CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, some more.
Thank you for trying to get him, thank you.